We do not have a flag, so I'll pull over to the bench. Agenda approval?
I make a motion.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported to approve the agenda as presented. All signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the last thing we have is a general conflict of interest review. Do we have anything?
Steph, no.
Okay, so that's items three, four, and five.
We don't have any publics, other than Lisa. Let's open our meeting. It's just 401. Roll call, Randy, please.
Everyone's here except trustee Larue, treasurer Johnson, and trustee Iverson. Staff present is manager Gerard.
Unless you want to say anything, Lisa, this is now your time. Forever hold your peace. Okay. This is a joint work session we are recording, right?
We are, yeah.
A joint work session with Marquette County Road Commission. Today's Thursday, October 18th, 2018. We're in the community center in Marquette Township. And on our agenda today is policy discussion and consideration and development, which will primarily focus on maintenance of township roads. So we can start wherever we want. If anybody has, if you want to go to your agenda, talk about our questions. Work session would be pretty relaxed.
I think we'll go with, I think our item B is similar to some of what you have. So if we do item A, Jim can present what our current federally priorities are. Just a footnote for everybody. We've got the new federal aid, what they call STIP, state improvement process, what the federal money is. And there's going to be a call for projects from 2020 to 2022. And that money, we have to share with the city of Marquette and Marktran. I guess our number one priority for that is going to be Ontario Street from Allen to Center Street and do that next section. We also have a safety grant that we're currently working on, County Road 492, on the design phase from the old Wright Street area to the city limit. And we are actively seeking category F money for that improvement. Category F money is to build all-season trucking routes or to improve all-season trucking routes in small urban areas. So those would be our two priorities here in the Marquette, small urban area for the road commission.
So that's next year, Jim? Next year plan?
When we're dealing with the federal Ontario Street, it's kind of a discussion between the city of Marquette, Marktran, and us. And usually, one or two projects get funded in a three-year period.
Okay.
So it kind of depends on how that goes. The category F grant on Wright Street, we've been asking for for the last four years. It's coming time that we'll probably get it either next year or the year after.
Okay.
Okay, so again, these are outside our regular budget items. These are grants. And so those are what we're asking in the grant process or in that use of federal fund process.
So the Ontario project, this is phase two of that three-year?
Three-project phase, yes.
Submittals or whatever, okay.
Yes.
Because I know Pete asked about that the other night. Where are we in that? And Randy and I kind of explained to him that that was not just an automatic thing. It was based on funding.
And it's the federal funding. And again, there's a call for a three-year period of time. And generally, you get one project in that three-year period of time. But that's for all the agencies in that area. And so it's us, Marktran, and the city of Marquette.
So that's our portion of it?
That's our ask. That's going to be the road commission's ask for that portion. You know, there's some roads that qualify in Chocolat Township for the same funding. And again, that's not our priority at this time. Our priority is in Marquette Township.
Why is that?
Because Chocolat Township is part of the Marquette small urban area. And the small urban area is based on the federal census. And it's areas, I believe, over 5,000 to 50,000. And then they base that on the census and the federal census.
Okay. Makes sense.
So that's our, you know, federal and state grant priorities in the area.
Typically, the small urban hinges on allowance of commercial traffic trucks.
It's based on commercial traffic, yes. And they try to spread that around. Again, it has to be in one of these small urban areas. And it's been a while since we've gotten one. That's why I think we will be successful.
With the pairing of the city and the township, usually the city doesn't allow trucks. So they kind of fall off.
For what we're talking on Wright Street, no. But when we're talking the federal funds from Ontario Street, we have been very adamant that the road commission is that, you know, the federal funds should be used where all traffic can use it and the city artificially restricts traffic. It's no different than our stance on Grove Street here, County Road 500. The township has put a weight restriction on that road. So again, our feeling is we shouldn't be spending money there if there's an artificial restriction on it. And so that's our stance when we deal with the city in those areas.
Okay. And do you have three years to do those or?
Once you're given the grant, it's for a certain year for Ontario Street. So it has to be done within 12 months of the award of the grant. But it might be a grant for 2022. It might be a grant for 2023. So it's not, as soon as you get it, you can spend it. Same thing with the category F grant on Wright Street. Usually, they let you know six, eight months in advance, and it's for that next construction season.
Okay. So you can kind of plan too?
Yes.
If you've got time, okay. Any thoughts on that or comments, questions?
I'm happy to see it's going to get done eventually. That part of it and then, and you got, it looks like a little end there from center down to right eventually, then, Jim? That'd be the fourth phase of that, okay.
I know the first phase was held up for a couple of years because the feds didn't allocate the funding. What do you think the outlook is for this phase? Hard to say?
That's hard to say. You know, are they going to do something with the federal gas tax? You know, they've been talking about that for the last seven, eight years. If they do something with that, then there might be some extra money. There might be more projects for the area.
How are you going to balance this, based on our discussion last year, with extra funds regarding equipment purchases? Are you going to, if you've got another windfall, $5 million or a million or whatever, are you going to try and portion some of that out for equipment too or projects?
None of these federal funds can go to equipment.
Okay.
These are all instruction funds.
There was a grant, like last year, for the intersection, I thought it was at Forestville Road. Was that an engineering grant?
That was an engineering grant to study that area and to see if there was anything we could do for the intersection, different types of control, and maybe doing some different things with the pavement markings.
Did anything come out of that? Or is it going to be in with the Wright Street?
Still going on.
Okay.
That's pretty cut and dried. Not that we can't come back to it if somebody else has got questions or something or comments. You want to go into stormwater?
Yeah, it seems to be common.
We had a lot of discussion about it the last couple meetings, partially from a budget standpoint with how we've got the fund set up. Had to go back and look at some of the stuff we were doing back in 2004 to that account. So financially, we were talking and bothered a lot. And then we kind of got into the drain commissioner and, you know, how can we help or not? Or what can we do? We kind of mentioned that last year when we visited. What are, you know, we've got a lot of water here and it's real high. So I don't know if, how, I know the drain commissioner is really more independent, but how do you work with him? Do you, can we make suggestions or questions regarding anything? Or do we go right to him? Or Randy probably knows that, but I know you work with him. How does that structure work?
Well, the drain commissioner is an independent body.
It's just like you and them and then us? Just all separate?
It's like you and us and them.
Oh. Actually, it's him. He's pretty much by himself.
Again, the drain commissioner has a lot of ability to handle things. But him handling things generally costs much more money than if it was handled at the township level or the road commission. So that's really the question. And there's ways for the drain commissioner to capture funds and to levy assessments and taxes to those people that are affected by whatever drain that would be. The only drain I believe he has is here in Marquette Township. That's the only one countywide. Yes. So again, that is an avenue. Randy and I talked probably three, four, or five years ago about, you know, drainage is again, one of the big issues here. Is there something like the city of Marquette? Could that be implemented and have a stormwater tax, user fee, whatever? Because that is something that's affecting lots of areas, not only on the roadside, but on the property side. And so, you know, those discussions are there. The road commission did do a drainage study of the whole Trowbridge Park area in 2002, 2003. And, you know, at that point in time, it was, we talked about what kind of culverts and sizes we needed. We had a consultant do that for all the road crossings. But again, it was basically more of a road crossing study than anything else.
There's not a county drain within the township?
Yes, there is. It runs down Warner Street here.
Badger Creek.
Down Warner Street?
It's the Badger Creek.
Yeah, Badger Creek.
Yeah, okay. So is that, does that, county drain have an established drainage district?
Yes, it does. You know, so I think that's still one area that the township and the road commission, township road commission and the drain commissioner could, you know, work towards. Because, you know, most of the calls we got are drainage issues. And I'm sure for every call I get, you get three calls. That's generally the way it goes.
So is that, you said that he can do a millstone assessment, then how does that work? What happens next? Let's say we do establish that.
I am not a drain commission expert.
So it's on his side? You don't have anything to do with that?
It's on his side. He can request that one's established. The township can request that one's established. But it's not, once you do that, it's out of our hands. And I believe last time this was done on the Badger, the township did come up with some funds to soften the blow to their citizens, to deal with some of the construction side of it. And that's going back to listening to Max Muley and the powers that be back then. I was not around when it was established. So I, that's just my understanding of what happened.
I think, if I'm not mistaken, doesn't the township has to initiate the request for drainage district improvements?
It could be the township or a road commission.
Or a road commission, either one?
Yeah, I believe so. I believe that's the case.
But then the residents would be the ones that would be taxed or assessed, not the road commission?
Well, the road commission will be assessed based on our right-of-way. Because it's based on who owns property that's being affected and improved. And, you know, so, and any establishment of a drain, we would pay our share of whatever was established.
But it's the whole township, right? Not just like the Badger?
It would be based on drainage districts.
Okay, okay.
So again, the Badger's got a drainage area. What's the next drainage area over? To each side, again, it's based on a specific district. It could be expanding the Badger drainage. It could be a separate one. Again, that's all stuff that would be done.
That's why it's more of an assessment then, because it's a nice little area. It's not really a township.
Right, right.
So then, we would make that another utility, part of our public works, right?
No. Any drainage district that was established would be the responsibility of the drain commissioner. He sometimes hires the road commission to help him with maintenance. Sometimes he hires contractors, depending on what it is. And there is a fund that he has and that is charged to the tax roll, I believe, to do maintenance and repairs to that.
But in the city, isn't it on your tax bill? I mean, on your water bill?
That's different though. Different structure.
Oh, okay.
It's a different structure in the city.
Okay.
The drain commissioners aren't involved in that. It's strictly city.
Because they own the, yeah, okay. That makes sense.
But it's an issue much like many others. People who perceive that they've got a drainage issue are less interested once they find out that they're going to be taxed for it.
Much like everything, sure.
It's like everything else.
There's a price tag attached, and it's not as popular anymore. You know, but from our standpoint, the issue that we have mostly is roadside. It's mostly, you know, the new roads and the runoff. And when we have these heavy rains like we have this year, we had a terrible year for real heavy volume. And, you know, we had a lot of flooding in Trowbridge. You know, a lot of that comes from residents' activity. They build a driveway and they'll put a culvert in. They perceive that the right-of-way belongs to them as part of their front yard, and they fill in the ditches and, you know, create ponding areas. That's one of our biggest issues, particularly now with, you know, the roadwork that we've done over the last three, four years. Just trying to figure out how we're going to maintain those things. We've already had, well, you know, we had one with that last major rainstorm, the corner of Fair and Vandenboom, I believe it was washed away. Basically exposed the culvert, exposed the water line. It's just, we just can't seem to manage that water flow.
Does any of that can be, can any of those issues be addressed by ordinance?
It's outside of our right-of-way.
Well, no, if the issues are being created within the road right-of-way.
Well, we have a, yeah, we have a stormwater ordinance. We require all the developers basically to maintain it on their own property and not go onto the property where we have the issues in Trowbridge, in the residential area. It's very close.
That's green development, correct?
Yeah.
That doesn't address existing development?
Yeah, it doesn't address Trowbridge at all.
We talked about this at township, county township level, probably about seven, eight years ago. And at that time, there was no desire as a county whole to levy any work that the road commission did, re-establishing those things that were filled in and putting culverts in people's driveways that weren't put in with permit to start with. There was no desire to allow the road commission to turn that over to the township and the township to put that on the tax roll. There was just no desire to do that, you know, from a countywide standpoint. And, you know, yes, we can go in and dig out the driveway, but that is generally a political bomb. And so, you know, that's something that could be addressed. But we want to make sure if we start doing stuff like that, that the township is 100% behind it, no matter if that is a township trustee's driveway or if that's just a normal citizen's driveway. I mean, it's all got to be the same. And when there's, you know, a call to the township, why did the road commission do this? Well, because.
We told them to.
Well, not because you told them to, because it was done improperly. And yes, we are going to put it on the tax roll. And if it's not put on the tax roll, how do we recover that? Well, we got to go to a small claims court. And it's not worth us going to the small claims court. And driveways are the responsibility of the resident.
Right.
All right? And I guess that's the biggest issue, is a lot of times that they will go in and put it in driveway without contacting us. And they will feel they don't need to put a culvert in or, hey, they haven't seen water in this culvert for years, so they fill in the ditch. Well, why is that? Is it because their neighbor filled it in? And so, you know, I think that's something that if the township is willing to have that discussion, we can look at trying to address those things, I guess, maybe in a more harsh manner. But again, that's something that the township board has to be willing to say, yes, we want to do this, and yes, we're willing to put that on the tax roll. Because generally for us, unless it's causing a major issue on the road, we're probably not addressing it and digging out the driveway. You know, if it's a minor drainage issue and it's causing the neighbor a problem and causing a little issue on the side of the road, everyone, we probably aren't addressing it. And so, you know, that's the real, you know, that's one of the things that might be willing to, you know, look at to try to address some of those situations.
So how about with our, with new development in the residential side of it? The ordinances, do we have no teeth maybe? Or there haven't been enforced that we're following up with that? If the driveway is?
We don't issue those permits. The county issues those permits. So we don't know about it.
But isn't it, is it a part of the site plan for a home too?
There's not a site plan for a home?
No, we don't have a site plan.
No, we don't have site plans for homes.
The only thing that happens on a township level is the zoning administrator gives them a zoning compliance. The county issues supposedly, issues a driveway permit. And, but there's no enforcement. We don't do even site plan reviews that goes to the resource management.
So your stormwater order that's only addresses commercial development, not residential development?
Yes.
Is that what I'm understanding?
Yep. Is there any county ordinance that allows you to go in and maintain the ditch?
Yeah, there's state law, there's state law that says we can do that.
And remove a driveway that was put in improperly?
There's state law that says we can do that.
I'm just trying to clarify.
Again, there's state law, but it's the political side of that state law. If I went in and dug out everybody's driveway that one didn't have a permit, it'd probably last about a day and a half.
Realistically, all the township residents right now are paying for it because, you know, we got a mill and a half for 15 years to redo the roads that were damaged by lack of drainage control, you know? Yeah.
So, yes, but that's the issue. And so, you know, if this board says, Jim, go ahead and dig out all the driveways that don't have a permit, this board will be here about as long as their next appointment. So again, there needs to be that political agreement that this is what's going to happen. Now, if the township is supportive, we can do that stuff easy. But if the township doesn't have that desire to do that, we're just creating our own issues. And that's something that, again, we haven't been wanting to do.
So does that end up being, that's township-wide, regardless of whether it's in the Badger? Or we just have to stick around the Badger again?
No, this is township-wide. If you guys say.
Somebody in Forestville or Bishop Woods or any other?
Up off the Eagles Nest or wherever.
But I think to solve, if you're going to address or try to solve the problem first, you're going to have to educate the homeowner.
Just like you do with the road project.
And if the homeowner complains, if the homeowner calls up the township office and got a complaint about drainage, well, one of the first questions that I think should be asked is, do you have a permitted driveway culvert? Or if you don't have a permitted culvert under your driveway, why not? You know, because you have no means of draining that water away. So the onus has to go back onto the property owner in respect to understanding they created their own drainage problem.
I'm sure they don't know that, and they won't know if they have a permit. Those folks have been there forever.
Yeah. And the other issue is.
And more times than not, they're looking for someone else to pay for it.
Oh, sure. Of course they are.
And remember, when all these roads were laid out, they were all laid out with ditches. That's not the expectations of your residents here anymore.
So what happens if in the middle of the subdivision, the worst five homes don't have ditches and culverts and stuff, and the rest do, let's say? Or vice versa? Basically, some do and some don't. And some have a water issue and some don't. How do you justify the assessment?
The property owner is responsible for their driveway.
Just to kind of clarify that, if you go in and clean the ditch out and tear the driveway out and put in another culvert, that whole bill for all of that activity gets levied onto the property?
If it's normal ditch maintenance that they have not filled in, that would be something the road commission would do. But if the driveway's there and it didn't have a culvert, or if the driveway's there and the culvert failed, that is the property owner's responsibility.
So even if they have a culvert in and that culvert fails, it's their responsibility to replace it?
It's their responsibility.
So if you go in and replace that, then it goes back on their tax roll?
Yes. The only exceptions that we've done is if we're doing a project in an area, if we're rebuilding the road, we will take care of all the culverts and ditches and driveways as part of that project. But if it is, hey, we're having this drainage issue, we're going to fix it technically, that's the way it should be fixed, is if the ditch just needs to be deeper because it filled up with winter sand, that's the maintenance that we're responsible for. Driveway culvert failed, that's the property owners technically. And if there is no culvert where there should have been one, that's the property owners. And that's where it gets sticky, and that's where the politicalness comes, is because, okay, it's $1,500 to put the new driveway in and put the new culvert in. What's the property owner going to say? It's not that big of a deal, but it might be for his neighbor, right? And that's where, again, now how do we recover it? If there's a policy that says that the township is willing to put that on the tax roll for the road commission, then we can say, hey, we did this at 552 Cherry Street. We've sent them a bill, they will not pay it. Please put this on the tax roll for us and you guys add it to the tax roll.
Oh, so this is separate from the assessment idea?
So where's the breakdown? Where's the breakdown in the system for residential? I mean.
Where is the breakdown?
I mean, in terms of how does, how does somebody, let's assume I want to build a house in Trowbridge, who tells me that I need to put a culvert in? Where does that, where's that breakdown? I mean, where is that communication when it's being developed?
The property owner is supposed to come to the road commission, and the property owner does not come to the road commission. And building codes people haven't been willing to help us very much.
So it's building codes, you know?
Well, I mean, they have, they have the knowledge of most of that stuff, right?
See, we run into that with fire, with the fire code as well. We run into that a lot with fire code. And, you know, and I think that's a piece that needs to be corrected. Because nobody's being told that they have to put the culvert in.
Can I ask a question? You have a stormwater ordinance, so that when a commercial developer comes in and develops property, he has to come to the township?
Right, large scale.
And get an ordinance, a permit.
See, we issue those.
All right. So what happens if the township decides to extend that to new residential development?
So what happens if the township decides to extend that to res- new residential development? Why can't that be done?
We don't have the authority to do that. That falls to county building.
No, you, you have a stormwater ordinance, that can, can't that be, how, how the property is developed, doesn't that also fall under the, I guess, what, what is the difference, sir? Why is residential development exempted under your stormwater ordinance from commercial development? If it's development of the property, it shouldn't make any difference, shouldn't it? Between residential and commercial?
Well, the difference is, is that commercial has to maintain it on their site. They have to maintain the drainage on their site to ensure that it doesn't get onto anybody else's property.
Why can't that be?
That would be the same thing.
Wouldn't that be the same thing for residential development?
Well, you're not retaining it on residential site, you're trying to move it.
All you gotta do is add what sentence to your ordinance.
But, but that, that's not necessarily what's allowed. Whether it's a residential or a commercial site, you shouldn't be adding additional water to the system.
Yeah, see, that's why they're required to maintain it. They're required to have a detention basin or whatever on site.
Drainage within the road right away, responsibility for that is, is drainage or surface runoff that is generated within the right of way, not outside of the right of way. And that's where a lot of the issue has been for years, because of the commercialized national development, you get surface runoff coming into the right of way.
Yeah, that's why they're, that's why.
But when you look at, but when you get right down to it, we don't, road commission does not have the authority to say yay or nay, you know, to that development, other than to make sure that they meet the requirements that the local agencies or local governmental agencies have put on them for that development.
Does, does the township have any authority to develop an ordinance that covers activities within the road right of way?
You have ability, yes. You can put a weight restriction on a road.
But can, can we have an ordinance?
You've got stormwater on commercial.
Can we have an ordinance requiring culverts that's in the road right of way? Or recovering, or covering ditch activities?
No. I, I, I think the question there is, notice that something's happening. We don't necessarily know something's being built in the township, unless we go by it and, and see it going on. That, that notification is hard for us to get.
Yeah, coordination issue.
We've talked about it at the planning commission level before, and I think probably comes back to township. The easiest thing that might be to do is have a site plan review for residential, because it would catch all of that.
It also sounds like.
Circumvent the county, though?
The application for residential development might be enhanced by having some notation about this drainage. In other words, if you tell them on the application that if you put in a driveway, you're responsible for the driveway, and to the extent they're responsible, it would, it'd be helpful.
Yes, so.
It would be, but we run into the county.
For, everybody has a foundation drain these days, right? Where do they outlet that into?
Road ditch.
That's illegal. I, I, I'm telling you, that, that's, that's illegal.
It is.
It, it's illegal, and it, and if water backs up and the basement floods, you know who's responsible?
You are.
The road commission. It's, it's that crazy.
Even if it's an illegal drain.
Property owner has to be notified that, that it's illegal and told to disconnect.
Well, and I think that's, that's where it could come back on the township a little bit. And to answer Lynn's question, you could have a, they have to come to the township for zoning compliance. And it could be at that meeting that they could have a site plan review, which has got nothing to do with the building permit approval. It's just a site plan review. It'd be required before it goes to resource management.
Do you have to, you, the town, does the township in or, or require a zoning permit?
The only thing the township does is issue a piece of paper that says there's zoning compliance, and they take that and go to resource management to get their building permit.
Because, you know, I, I'm just saying that somehow, because we don't find out what, what happens with new residential development. But if you have a zoning permit requirement for residential development, you could notify the road commission that we just issued a zoning permit for this residential development at this location.
They're giving a piece of paper that says they need to notify the road commission for a driveway.
Says it on there.
It does say it on there.
Yeah.
Okay, so then, and if we don't hear about it, then they failed, then they didn't comply with the zoning permit.
Yeah, I don't think there's any question. The issue's being created by the property owners. There's no question about that. You know, how, how does, how does a corrective action occur? If it's ditching, and if it's culverts, you know, that's violations of road commission ordinance. And, but we don't have inspectors, and we don't have people, you know, going around looking.
Can you require them to have the driveway permit before you issue your zoning permit? And to say, could you change it to say, okay, you want this permit? Show us that you've gotten your driveway permit.
It could be with the change in, in the pro- procedure of planning. It could be.
They could have like a checklist.
A checkmark required.
I'm sure they've already got a checklist of things that, when they go there, and that could be one of them.
Checklist now says you have to go there, basically. You have to go to get that permit before you go to building boards.
But there's nothing on there that checks to make sure you actually went.
That you got it, no. Or that when your house is being built, that you're actually putting it in.
We just do a carbon copy then, you know, the Canary copy always goes to somebody, and you got a pink copy, so we have a dual form, and we send it to the road commission when, when it happens. So they're notified, and then the resident knows it's on his checklist. It's his responsibility, and then you have, then you can enforce it?
Yeah. Just, just to let you know, this has been an issue ever since I've been at the road commission. This isn't a, isn't a new issue. And it's, there hasn't been a, a good solution across the three groups of government, the county proper, the townships, and the road commission. I mean, there, there just hasn't been a, a good.
No.
Way to meld those three responsibilities together.
Because you run into, you run into resistance. We ran into it with the fire, with fire inspections. We go nose to nose with, with county codes all the time about we, under the bulk of code, we don't have authority to do fire inspections, you know, on residences. And we, and we don't, we don't inspect residences. We inspect businesses, you know? So, I mean, we run into that all the time. And, you know, and realistically, every year, you're gonna start, the very first day we get snow that you plow, I guarantee you, I'll get half a dozen to twelve calls about, they tore up my grass! No, it's in the right of way, it's not your grass. And they, you know, and they just don't accept that. It's my lawn up until the pavement. No, it's not. You know, every year, same people, over and over again, and some new ones. But, but that's the, the mindset that, you know, that Dave was talking about. You know, you can have all the checklists in the world you want, unless you got boots on the ground, walking, following behind them to make sure they do it, they're not gonna do it, because it's cost more.
So I guess, I just, it just, this blows me away that we keep having this discussion.
Year after, year after, year.
Year after year about drainage issues, and it's always because of property owners not wanting to accept responsibility. So we keep having this discussion, knowing that there is no, in my mind, there is no, there is a way, but it's not acceptable, because it's gonna cost money.
Yeah, well, it's like Jim said.
There's gonna be an assessment back onto the property owner, whether it's, whether they pay it, or they gets assessed to their tax roll. That's the only way you're gonna address a lot of these existing drainage issues that we have. That's my opinion.
But that's still only one person at a time, too.
Well, but that's the only way you can do it.
Yeah, but like I said, when you have a case where two or three homes are the problem, and the one at the bottom is getting, they're, they're because these guys are wrong, and you're gonna assess him, you know, that doesn't seem right. I mean, if we did it as a township.
If you did it as a township, and drain commissioner put all those improvements in, everybody would pay their fair share, and their fair share would be based on the drainage area of their property and where it drains.
So an assessment for Trowbridge would be different than Bishop Woods? Is that what you're saying?
Possibly. The amount would be different.
That's what I mean.
Yeah, yeah, well, it depends on your, your surface, you know, what, what you're generating for runoff.
And out in Bishop Woods, most, they don't have drainage, too many drainage issues. Not saying they're completely done, but their drainage issues are much less than Trowbridge Park. So you probably wouldn't be establishing a drainage district.
At all.
At all there.
Still do that pick and choose, don't you?
Yes. I mean, what, what you wanna target with that drainage district is where the drainage problems are. And the drain commissioner has been set up in state statute so that it's done fair, and then everybody pays their fair share, regardless of whether you need a storm sewer system, or a ditch system, or whatever. And so, that is one way to do it. It's awful expensive to do it that way.
Now, city.
Do you think?
Up to two mils?
He can levy whatever he wants, whatever he wants to, that, that.
Whatever it costs.
Whatever he wants has to be approved by voters initially and that stuff, but once that gets going.
Yeah, you know, as for instance, the stormwater ordinance of the city is based on your improper surface, depending on how big your roof is, how much pavement you have. It's different for different properties, the, the amount that's paid. And then it's basically to operate their stormwater system that they have. We don't have a stormwater system. The other thing that exacerbates a lot of what happens in the township is the majority of those properties are constructed below grade. Yeah, they're, they're natural drain areas, you know, they're naturally flooding.
You know, you think it would help if a brochure was made, you know? Before you complain, and then put these problems there. Number one, you know, about the, what you just said about the plow, you know? Show them in a, in a brochure what your.
Right of way is.
What the right of way is, and about drainage, you know? You could put the whole bottle of wax. Somebody calls, give them a pamphlet. Or you could put a pamphlet in every, you know, mail one, so that every, every person has one.
And then don't put a phone number in.
And I'm sure we're not, I mean, Marquette Township or Marquette County isn't alone in these issues, it's statewide.
We're not unique.
So you'd think maybe the township association statewide would help do something like that. So you tell them, look, this is what it's all about.
That's true.
It would be nice.
So from our perspective, can we do anything with the existing ordinance to, what would we want to do?
It'd have to be a separate ordinance. The way our ordinance, our current ordinance that we have is designed specifically for business development. It's not, it's not really applicable to residential. It would just have to be a different kind of an ordinance. Well, then it would have to be the kind of an ordinance that puts the responsibility back on the property owner. If, you know, if you're in violation, you need to correct, and you've got X amount of time to correct.
But only under new construction.
Well, no, you can, you can say existing.
You can go back, you can go retroactive.
You can go retroactive.
Especially culverts, driveway culverts.
I'm saying, if you take your driveway culvert out, and you cause a drainage problem, or you are having a drainage problem because you took that culvert out, then under the ordinance, you're responsible to get it fixed.
I don't think it's a Marquette township ordinance, so it's already a county ordinance. You just need to inform them that it's there.
I, I think the question is, is ditches and culverts acceptable to the Trowbridge Park area, these, from this point moving forward? And if that's acceptable, and that's the way the township would like it to stay, then I think it's strictly dealing with filling in the ditches and making sure that the culverts are in the proper driveways. Okay? That, that's, that's one area. The next question then is if that's not acceptable, and people don't want to have ditches in their driveways, and they want it more like a City of Marquette feel, right? Then you need to create a storm water system.
Right.
And I, I think that's the question that the township should answer. Because they're two different things, and the magnitude are quite different.
So that's where it would be part of the public works, it'd be utility.
Well, it would be, it could be a utility that the road commission runs, because that's where the ditches are, where the stormwater is. And when we put the county drain in on Warner Street, right, and we ran the, the storm sewer the entire length on the north side, that's our responsibility. When we did on Terryo Street, right, we put all those storm sewers in, that's our responsibility, but that was part of the reason it cost a million dollars for a half mile.
Right.
Right? But not, well, so I think that's the question that the township should answer. If it is ditches and culverts, that's fine. We'll deal with the, the driveways and filling in the ditches. And I think we can come and work on that together. But if it's, we want the City of Marquette feel, we don't want ditches in the front yard anymore, we will.
You want sewer pipes.
If that's the answer, then we need to find a way to fund that type of a improvement. And the road commission can't tax. We're not gonna find grants to do all that. So then it would, might make sense to do a stormwater ordinance like the City of Marquette to help fund that type of a system in the future. I think that's really some of the questions that should be answered.
Yeah, and that's what the drain commissioner tried to do with Badger District, was to control the noise through the Badger District. The problem you run into is you've got thirty-nine hundred total residents to spread that cost over. You know, and, you know, that's residents, that's not households.
Yeah, that's right.
But that second option, as soon as you propose it, and you present to the public that you're gonna end up paying for it, one way or another, the popularity of it will diminish. And we're right back where we are.
But it might be a good exercise to say, that's why we're not too big.
I agree, I agree. It would be good for us to say, here's the problem, here's two solutions. But one of them is gonna cost you as an individual, as a taxpayer.
It's no different than the road project. Same, same thing, you know, people are complaining about the condition of the road, so we ask them, are you willing to fund it? Here's what it'll cost. You know, and they overwhelmingly said, yes. I don't know that it would be the same, because you don't have a big rainstorm that often. You know, it's like you, you know, driving a road every day versus two big rainstorms a season, you know, that may or may not flood your property.
And, and it, and it might not be a simple ballot question. Maybe it is more of a strategic planning thing through the planning department, and, and attack it that way. And then if there is some desire, is to take a, take a look at it from, from that perspective.
Yeah, and that's what the city did. The city started their stormwater ordinance long before they put the, the system in place initially. And then you pay it every month, it's on your bill. You pay a large dollar a month based on your, based on your roof area and your driveway paved area.
So if you, say, if, I'm just trying to get the feel about how aggressive township wants to be. You know, say if you got a small residential area in here somewhere, and you got, say, two or three property owners that are complaining about drainage, and the two or three property owners have created the, the problem.
Most cases.
They've taken the culverts out and regraded everything. What's the feeling of, of the township? Are they willing to go to those streets and say, hey, you created a problem? We can fix it, but it's gonna be charged to your property tax roll, so if you don't pay for it.
Now that we've fixed all the roads, it's our problem. You created drainage problems, you created drainage issues, and all we did was put it back where it was originally designed to be.
Well, that's what I'm saying, it's, it's the only way you're gonna take care of these existing issues.
Oh, I know, I know.
I think you're absolutely right. But the person at the top of the terrain won't give a damn, and the person at the bottom.
That's right, I understand that.
And there's nothing you can do for those folks.
The people at the top that are causing it.
But there's nothing, there's nothing you can do for the folks that are at the bottom with a saddle. They're gonna flood, they're going to flood. And, you know, and, and that's what we're dealing with in a lot of places.
And that's another reason why the property that they bought was less expensive.
Right.
Well, actually, it's gonna get worse, the more you build, the worse it's gonna get.
Well, it is, and we're continuing to have infill, and, you know, and that, that's going to happen, you know?
But we, with the help of the road commission, did a great job in fixing the roads. What we've done is introduce our new problem.
Well, it's heightened it.
Yeah.
It heightened the new problem.
Randy, you're gonna have to buy a ticket tonight and win that big lotto. And then you eliminate all that.
No, my husband already did.
Oh, okay.
He wants to buy that foreign property in Big Bay.
We'll never see him again.
I'll send postcards.
So even if, if the board has a philosophical discussion about how do we want to address water flow in the township, I guess what's our next step if we want to try to back up and either look at the ordinance? Or, I mean, you've gone through some of that, but I'm saying it for their benefit. Do we want to look at tackling an ordinance?
I think our Planning Commission should-
Well, I was going to say-
Be introduced-
This is a rhetorical question.
With the problem that the township faces and as time permits, let them suggest-
Chew on either the ordinance idea or-
Or a plan.
Can we do something in the short term then with copying you on, on permits and stuff? Does that help? Can you enforce it? Can you?
Again, we can, enforcing it beforehand's easy.
Do we have to have the ordinance in place to do that?
No.
Okay. That's your authority, so you can.
Enforcing it beforehand is easy.
Okay.
It's after somebody's spent the money.
Well, enforcing it after the fact is easy. It's just how much grief you're going to have.
No, no, it's not easy from this chair or these chairs.
From your chairs, it's not going to be easy.
But, and, and that's why, that's why if it comes through as a policy that Marquette Township supports putting stuff on the tax roll if the road commission is addressing.
But this is after the fact.
This is after the fact. But, but, but if you support that-
It's going to have to do a two-fold.
Regardless of whether we deal with stormwater, drainage and everything else, but if there's issues created by property owners without proper permits and filling in ditches and we say, "Okay, it's important to Marquette Township to take care of these issues as they come up." And I get the phone call either from one of them or, you know, Randy gives me a call and says, "Hey, we got this drainage issue" or whatever, and we go out there and we decide, "Hey, this is what needs to happen. These three driveways need to be pulled out and culverts poured in and we need to reditch it. And, okay, property owner, it's your responsibility and it's going to be $1,500, $2,000, $3,000." And they say, "No way. We need your support." We need, we need your support when they call the county board and say, "No, that's the direction that we want to go." And I, I think that's the, that's what these two boards need to say is going to happen if that's what you want done. Because if you guys aren't going to support it and if these guys get a call from the county board and they say, "Jim, don't do it even if you support it," it's not going to work. So, I mean, the two boards have to be on the same page. As in Marquette Township, this is the way we're going to deal with it.
And that would be some huge education.
Well, does it make sense? Joe had suggested, you know, Joe had mentioned a brochure, you know, doing some kind of a brochure. Every month, we send out a calendar to every taxpayer in the township. Would it make sense to start the process by having a joint message from the road commission and the township board addressing drainage? And why do we have a drainage issue? You know, and asking residents to look at their property. Do you have a culvert in your driveway? Have you filled in a ditch? Is there a ditch present?
And who's responsible?
Well, and, and basically identify it exactly. Say, you know, "This is why we have a drainage issue. We have two solutions." You know, to consider. And at least start that discussion in that manner.
No, it's not going to be easy to mow your lawn anymore.
Right.
Well, but, but, but that, that's going to be the political issue.
Well, you know, I mean, it, it is if, you know, a ditch doesn't have to be an ugly amenity in your front yard. I mean, I've seen lots of places where, where the residential community has ditches because they don't have in-ground stormwater, but they've got riprap, you know, rock riprap and, you know, and it looks nice. But, but it's not forever. You do have to maintain it.
You've got to maintain it. And the issue in Trowbridge Park is the right-of-ways are narrow. And if we ha- are forced to do that stuff within the right-of-way without encroaching-
It's going to be a separation.
It's, it's going to look deep and ugly. I, I, I mean, that, that, that's the truth. It's going to, it's going to be deep and ugly. And I, I can't sugarcoat that any.
No.
Because I can't, I believe there's 60-foot right-of-ways if they're not 50.
60.
60.
And, all right, we've got 12-foot of pavement, right? A little bit of spot on the edge of pavement and then down to a ditch. And then back up. I mean, that's-
You think it'd be wise to have a consultant come in and do a study?
No.
On the whole township?
No.
Just expensive.
Basically, I'll probably tell you what you already know.
You know it's wrong.
Let me go. The real solution is, the real solution is pipe. I mean, the real solution is piping it, but that's an expensive solution.
Right.
And then where do you pipe it?
Right.
I mean, you know.
And then you have to maintain it.
Well, and it, and it, and in our, in our geography in Trowbridge Park, it's going to have to be pumped. I mean, it's not going to flow gravity-wise because we're up and down and up and down and up and down all over. It's going to pool.
They don't have grinder pumps for stormwater.
No, you have to have a utility pump. So it's, you know, it's, it's a difficult situation.
I would think the place to start might be send it back to Planning Commission to put together some recommendations on how to move it forward because I think there's about-
Now that you've heard a lot of this.
Three or four steps there. And the first one starts with education. And then as you expand your education, you get it into the expensive options and the more expensive options.
Well, Jim's right.
But then everybody understands.
You're going to have to get buy-in, you know, the larger geographic areas are going to have to buy-in from the county board. And they just don't seem historically to be interested in it then. They put roadblocks up. The last time they had it, it was unanimous, you know, and one or two communities said, "No, we're not interested." And they flushed it. It was gone for, you know, for a maintenance knowledge.
But if we have simple things like notifying the road commission of what's going on or if we can-
Well, and that may be. But then again-
That's a beginning.
But then again, you have to have the county board step up with the, with the codes department and say, "You will coordinate and cooperate with the local township." Because right now, they don't.
Now, we have some control over that if you put it in the right context with a zoning compliance permit.
Possibly.
As part of the education. If they don't walk out of the office with a zoning compliance permit, they can't get a building permit. So you do have some control over that. It's just a matter of when you enforce it versus... You can't enforce it after you give them a zoning compliance.
Well, yeah, that's it. You know, they're, they're getting the information now. They're just not following through. But if, but they've already got the zoning compliance in hand.
If, for example, in order for them to get a zoning compliance permit, they had to show up with a permit from the road commission that says they've been approved for a driveway and culvert. So then you know if they've got the information.
So-
If that was one of the things that had to happen before you checked the zoning compliance and signed off, that would-
Well, then, you know, the, the second-
We'd have to go back to check up on it.
That's the second question. How do you, do you, would you then follow up on that permit to see if it was constructed?
We generally have the foreman watch for those things. And we give the foreman a per- Once we issue a permit, we give the foreman from the area.
Well, that's a simple fix for us. That's just a procedural fix.
Yeah, and if something come out of Planning Commission, just set it up so it follows the right procedures.
All you have to do is just change the, just change the zoning compliance permit issuance.
But it's hard.
Now, can you do the same thing on somebody who comes in for remodeling? That's exterior?
There's a couple of things in there where it says if there's 50% of that's going to be changed that you can have to reapply for everything.
So then, then that's the one way of getting back on the, on existing development is through that aspect also.
Well, then I think if you went through the right education program and the existing properties have been given an opportunity to come up to speed on the fact of what's, what's not right about their property. They filled in the ditch and they don't have a culvert. I think it's a little easier as you get a little further down the road. If they've, if the education is out there and everybody's been brought up to speed. I mean, nobody's going to like being told that they've got to spend a couple thousand dollars to, to dig their ditch out.
Right.
But it's different whether you show up this morning and dig the ditch and send me a bill as opposed to I've been sitting around for the last couple of years wondering when you're going to show up. I'm not going to like it either way, but one way is sticker shock and the other way's-
You know, and I, from a road commission standpoint, if the driveways were taken care of, I don't think, you know, the ditching part, I think we can address.
Most likely.
It's, it's the, you know, hey, we're taking out the ditch you filled in and we're going to put a pipe in your driveway now. That's, that's really the, the political support we need. And I would encourage it to be a board policy so that staff can hang their hat on that. And when they come to complain to you about it happening, you can, you can say this is done by policy. And that's how the road commission has it with the driveways. It's, it's there by policy.
I have another question to follow up on, you know, a person getting a permit. Then we would go and check to see if he complied with that permit. If he doesn't comply with that permit, we actually can go in there, make the correction and bill that person, right? Or put it on the tax roll.
Right now, our only way to bill the person is to go to small claims court.
Right. But if we had the backing of the township?
If we had the backing of the township that said they were willing to put those issues on the tax roll, that makes it a lot easier for us. And then it's one of those things, "All right, it would be easier for us to make the call to go do that." Because we got some people that we've told, "You've got driveways issues and it's your, your cost." And they say, "So what? What are you going to do about it?"
Yeah.
And all you need is a policy for that? You don't need an ordinance?
Ordinance.
Ordinance.
Township needs an ordinance to do it.
To do it.
Yeah, it would be an ordinance.
But again, that would be-
I guess that could be a common stormwater ordinance.
You wouldn't, you wouldn't think you'd have to reinvent the wheel. You'd think that somewhere somebody has ordinance.
Well, you know, we have it. We have an ordinance. Would be a mod, I would suggest that it would be a modification of the existing ordinance, a new section of the existing ordinance.
You can add a residential section to that.
That'd be a Planning Commission deal.
We don't need to worry.
If I go back to agendas, we, on the questions here, we pretty much have the discussion on your question number three. What about question number one and number two? Where are we at on those two with our discussion? Has our discussion touched on any of those?
No.
Moran Street, drain it.
No problem.
No.
That's basically going to take a drain field, field and stormwater sewer to address it.
That's the one right out here.
Right out here.
Yeah.
If I understand that right, you just need to collect the water on the south side and move it underground to the north side and put it in the ditch, right?
Uh, I think it's a little more cumbersome than that. Yeah. Mike Carrington took another look at it today and he was questioning whether we could get it there easily into the ditch and then the ditch flowing where it's supposed to go.
Because that's right out back here. So that's, you'd have to put it where that flows down, right?
Yeah.
Down this way?
Yeah.
Keep saying "but." Why?
Well, hey, it's, it's that whole thing now. We've got, we've got a Crown Street. We've got water coming off the hill or from underneath the street. Water's supposed to go that way. Now we're going to change water and put more water this way. Once we do that, we're liable for more water that we're putting this way. And that was the whole rigmarole that we ended up on the
Vand and Boom.
Vand and Boom issue is again, we just have to be careful once we add water to a system that we don't get stung by it, okay? That, that, that's why it's a-
I think, I think before the extension went through on Moran Street, it went that way, right?
You're absolutely right. Now, whose lawyer's going to win? That's the issue, Dave. That's why I said we just need to be careful there. It might not be as simple as collect it and throw it across the street. Okay? And, and that's why I say that. So, yes, that, that is, that would be the simplest, easiest solution.
You know, other than the legal and political aspects of that, basically it's put a collection area on the south side and pipe it over to the north side.
Yes.
Similar to what's on Orchard. Is that what you're talking about? Something like that?
Yeah.
Those are French drains. Oh, well, they're-
Those are French.
Oh, I mean, on, by Ubersens.
Yeah, that's a French drain. It's there.
By Ubersen?
No, that's not.
No, that's the Badger. It's all ponded up there and then metered out.
Yeah, that's a sediment.
So Dave, it, it could be a $4,000 or $5,000 maintenance issue or it could be a $15,000 or $20,000 storm sewer issue. And we did, I just, we need to make, just make sure that we can, we're all right with the $4,000 or $5,000 maintenance issue.
So are you guys taking, taking a look at that? Tried to make a judgment?
Mike Carrington looked at it again today. And, yes.
Okay.
What about question number two?
Yeah, the other one was Smith paving punched a hole in the brand-new road up there. And just my understanding was that was going to be repaired in a, in a certain manner and it was just filled.
I had a discussion with Kurt on it and after he did write the letter that said, "Rip it all out and redo it," when they got over there and took a look at what was really going on, Kurt felt comfortable of making the repair that happened. And there was another one that where, where there was a square out in that same area. That was a mud flap off of a truck-
Yep.
That popped. And basically Kurt did not think it was worth creating a big seam to try to cut the whole lane out. And then you have a seam, a 12-foot seam, a 10-foot seam, and then another 12-foot seam on the, on the pavement. So he made the call not, not to do that. Once he was there and he looked at the actual damage here, it did not go down to the second layer and did not get into the, the gravel, he said. That was my-
Oh, on the, you mean on the mud flap one?
No, on, I believe he was talking about the, the hole that was there.
The Smith trailer? Oh, yeah, that was right down to the rock. That was all the way through.
They said through with the Smith trailer. It was everywhere afterwards. And they actually had buckled the whole pavement and started taking it with them.
Okay.
They riveted it up, basically, rolled it up like a carpet.
I will re, relook at that, but that was my understanding from talking to Kurt this morning on it.
Okay, we've got some direction then that we can bring up at the board meeting.
Do we, do we want to put an information piece out to the residents with the November calendar?
That we're talking about this?
Or the December calendar about drainage in general, with the background?
I would do something at the board to direct- To direct the Planning Commission to put something together.
Yeah, I think so. Let you guys look at it.
Because I think that's a whole, whole education program.
Because I think we have to lay it out and say, "How are we going to address this whole program? Are we, how do we start? What do we, what's our end result, even if it's in sections?
And, and we would be interested in helping out on that. One of the things that came out recently again is this foundation drainage into the storm sewers or into the ditches. And we got some information that we would like property owners to sign off if that happens. Still allow them to have, have it there, but basically say, "If, if there's a flood, the road commission, you're not responsible for flooding our basement." And we'll want to, that would be, I think, good information to put in that correspondence as well. And let them know that you might be seeing something from the road commission if we see a drain into the ditch, you know, foundation drain, that you're going to see this request and you need to either sign it or remove it.
Got it.
So if we can get, well, we can talk about it at the board meeting, but I'm seeing an outline. You know, the first step, what five steps do we want to do or three or whatever? And which ones are going to come first? You know, do we look at just amending the ordinance first of all with the, to include residential? Do we want to look at putting some kind of a policy together, working with the road commission? Do we want to look at the additional, like I call it, the Canary copy to inform them when the-
Focus the ordinance. You're going to have, you're going to have to go through a public hearing process to amend the ordinance. I mean, that's-
Give us the steps. This can go first. We can do the brochure. We can do an amendment, a second page to the, I want to say the site- We can do an amendment, a second page to the, I want to say, the site plan, the zoning compliance, and inform them. And it doesn't have to even be in that order.
You're not talking about doing that at the board level, right? You're just talking about sending a back plan.
No, you guys, I'm saying, I'm asking you for an outline.
Yeah, the first thing the board has to do is send a back plan.
Right, I know. We've got to talk about this at a meeting, but that's what I'm envisioning, so that we have... And then if we want to take it, like, the fifth or sixth step is, you know, create the, either an additional storm...
It's just as easy as identifying the problem and backing it up from there.
Yeah. That's why I said, what's the minimum and what's our end result? And then itemize them out, and then maybe we take number three off and just do two and four or something.
Yep.
If that makes sense.
Any correspondence, mailers that you want to send out? I would wait until after the election, because I, yeah, I threw away four things today that was in my, and, you know, because a lot of the stuff, and you don't want to get mixed up in that.
I don't think it's anything that's going to move that fast.
I just, yeah, I thought maybe you guys had it ready tomorrow.
Normally, when we do something like that, we send it out with the utility bills, same envelope, same package.
Okay, if we can move on, and we have a third item, which is Senate Bill 396.
396.
Yeah, what's that kid's at? Trying to find that all over the websites.
Is that the one that lets us take the roads?
You want them?
There's a couple, there's a House bill and a Senate bill out there that's been sitting there forever that allows the township to assume...
Assume responsibilities.
To take the roads back. Is that what this is, or?
No, this is allowing the logging companies to run anywhere, anytime.
Anytime, yeah. No weight restrictions.
The logging companies, weight restrictions, being able to run on any dirt or gravel.
I can't believe we're doing that, but...
Oh, they are, yeah, serious.
Getting a lot of pressure.
Outstate especially.
So, just would like you to make you guys aware of that. We had the Township Association here in the county pass a resolution to support. If you guys could take that up at your board meeting and support not allowing the logging industry to run roughshod.
Opposition of 396.
Yeah. And I'd be happy to get Randy a copy of the resolution that was passed by the county board and the Township Association, but that's, our fear is that this will happen in lame duck some two, three in the morning, and there hasn't been too much public information out there about this, and our goal is to make sure that the public understands what's going on. The other thing that you guys should have in the back of your mind is when license plate fees increased twenty to twenty-five percent for everybody on January 1st of 2017, logging industry and the ag industry didn't see any increase at all.
They're exempted.
So they were exempt from that. The last item is that a logging truck was paying about three hundred dollars for his license plate, and I'm always sure that anybody that's got a heavier vehicle was paying over two hundred dollars for that. So just keep that in your back of your mind. They already have several exceptions that are quite nice for them.
Well, if I call my motorhome a logging motorhome, I think it's a cheap rate.
Go with agriculture.
All you got to do is just haul it.
I'm just slut shy of four hundred dollars.
I'm telling you what they pay. The logging truck is paying less than you're paying for your motorhome.
Eye-haul carrots and potatoes.
On your license plate fees.
Maybe I'll get an agricultural.
That doesn't seem right, does it?
No.
But it does seem typical.
A normal trucker's paying around three thousand per split. So just to put it in perspective for you.
So what was the whole point of taking it off of weight from the beginning years ago? Because they thought they were going to make more money by doing it by the year of the vehicle? Wasn't it the bigger cars and bigger trucks and stuff paid more?
It's by value now.
Yeah.
It's by cost.
Was it just the newer ones?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Weight got lighter. Cars are lighter these days.
And you used to.
Logging trucks are getting lighter, too.
After five years or something, but they removed the reduction.
Really?
So you don't get a reduction.
Truckers on diets, is that it?
Do you have any of that information that you can share so we could share?
I don't have it right with me, but I can get some information. I'll get it to Randy.
Yep.
Okay.
And that's it for us. We're all done. Any public comment?
Do you have anything else?
That was it for me.
I think the session in general has, it's generated a plan to how we will communicate the extent of the problem, and our jointly plan to address it. I think it's been great. Lots come of this.
Yeah, it's given us a little bit to brainstorm on something that's really important.
I'm glad I showed up, because I was pleasantly surprised.
I didn't see you, I thought all of the cave ops, and said, no, this isn't going to go anywhere.
I was reading your mission statement there, recognize, meet the needs. Well, we did half of it. We recognize.
Yeah.
We're on the way to meeting the needs. That's what we do with the roads, you know?
And, you know, I think what's positive is if we can work on this together, I think there's some other townships throughout the county that would definitely come on board, and this isn't the only issue we have.
No, no kidding.
With the same, there's same problems throughout the county. And I got an email from Iron County, no, Gogivit County, about five weeks ago, asking how to deal with the same issue. So, I mean, it is, it is not just a Marquette Township issue.
Yeah, we're going to be more and more wet as the time goes on, just the way it's going.
Well, we've broken ground on a lot of new issues over the last ten, fifteen years that people have jumped on, so this can be another one. I mean, Combenzi said, what did you guys do with the road mileage? Tell me how that works. Could the city do that? Yeah, they could.
No.[1783.52]